I'm sorry, we're calling the meeting to order for the Planning Commission for November 29th. Do we have a roll call and determination of a quorum, please?
Jefferson Stabler. Vice Chair Borders. Commissioner Esman. Commissioner Monroy. Commissioner Salerno. Commissioner Stoll. Commissioner Tingle. A quorum's present.
Thank you. Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, for possible action, approval of the minutes from October 25th, 2017. Any comments or changes, or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of October 25th.
Commissioner Esman?
I'll second.
You have a second, Commissioner Borders, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Modification of agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion of related items on the agenda. At this time, I want to mention that Item E3 for possible action, the Board supervises the tentative subdivision, Mac Blackstone Development Incorporated, has been continued. We will be approving a continuance. They asked for us to approve a continuance, so if anyone's here for that item, that will not be being heard tonight. Is there any other?
No other modifications. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing matters. E1, SUP-17-164, for possible action, a consider request for a special use permit for David Stoops to add accessory structure that will result in a cumulative square footage of necessary structure to exceed 75 percent of the size of the primary structure and 5 percent of the parcel size on property zone, single-family, one-acre SF1A located at 4444 Center Drive, APN 009174-03.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is proposing to construct a 2,000-square-foot prefabricated metal building on a .93-acre property. The overall height of the structure will be 18 feet. The structure will be painted beige, and access will be from Rovatini Way via roll-up door and a man door from the existing driveway. So if you were able to go out there on Rovatini, which, that's a picture of it, on Rovatini, what you saw was a wooden fence, but if you look closely at the fence, you could see the hinges where there was a gate, and so they're proposing to take access from that gated area as opposed to the driveway that's in the front of the house. The primary structure with the attached garage, and there's a site plan posted right now, is 1,992 square feet. The detached structures will be 198 percent of the size of the primary structure, and the lot coverage by the accessory structures will be 6.9 percent. No plumbing is proposed in this building. Because this requires a special use permit, the commission is considering seven findings of fact. Staff was able to make those seven findings of fact in the affirmative as outlined in the staff report. I want to highlight just a couple items. One, staff sees this shop as an opportunity to clean up the site. The fence does a pretty good job of screening it from Rovatini, but if you go past the end of the fence and you look back from the neighbor's yard, you'll see it's not fenced. So if you were able to go around the block, you can do have glimpses into the yard, and you can see that there's a lot of items being stored in that yard. So staff thinks this is a good opportunity to store those items in the building as opposed to out in the open. Also, staff has heard concerns from neighbors regarding this being constructed to accommodate a home occupation. I just want to remind the commission that in our home occupation regulations, no more than 20 percent of the total ground floor area of a dwelling and accessory structure may be used for a home occupation, and there can be no outdoor storage. So should the applicant want to pursue a home occupation, the amount of space that can be allocated to that home occupation is really significantly limited to the 20 percent, and it's not just the home, it's the ground floor of all those buildings, and then you look at 20 percent. And he would not be able to store things outside should he pursue that. So staff does not find that the consideration of a potential future home occupation to be problematic, given the restrictions we have associated with home occupations. Again, the applicant's not seeking a home occupation, staff has just heard concern from the neighbors, so we wanted to proactively address it. Again, the findings, staff has been able to make the findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. Mr. Stoops is present, as is JP Smith, and Mr. Smith will be speaking on behalf of the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The 20 percent would be, we'll say, a couple hundred or 300 square feet, or whatever it might be. Couldn't he just use that area and still do repairs, et cetera, in the rest of the building for storage? Or, I mean, it doesn't look like that's a real detriment, possibly.
Right. I guess my point is the entire 2,000-square-foot shop would not be turned over to a home occupation. So if there was worry that he's building the shop to accommodate a business, the answer is that worry can't be realized because the entire 2,000 square feet of that building cannot be utilized. It would be a much smaller number, as you just outlined.
But my question is, he could still do car repair or whatever in a 200 or 300-square-foot area of that building?
Correct.
And the rest would be for storage. So in essence, he could still-
For personal use.
He still could run a business out of there in that area if it was car repair or whatever, correct, or boats or whatever?
He could allocate up to 20 percent of the space to a home occupation. It could not have outdoor storage, and the balance would need to be private use, not associated with the home occupation.
So if it were being done that way, could the personal items that he owns still be left outside, and just the ones he was working on of someone else's would not be able to be left outside? In other words, they could, you know, just, if I brought my car out there, he could work on it, couldn't leave mine outside, couldn't leave all the other stuff outside.
If you can just let staff answer the commission's questions, if that's okay with the chair?
That's okay. We'll just hear what, I just want to hear what the thing says on.
Okay. Also in the home occupation, it says you can't have vibrations, fumes, like a certain equipment that's going to make noises, so on and so forth. So the likelihood of it being out of repair, and I'll double-check the code and see if it speaks specifically to that, is unlikely. I bring this up only because, could you have a home occupation that covers 20 percent, and is there a mandate that the items being stored outside right now, today, be brought into the building? No, there's not a mandate to do that. Can you store personal items in your backyard? Yes, you may.
We know about the one in 2015 because, I guess the question is, have you seen many of these coming through in the last couple of years? Sort of a historical question in terms of large accessory structures, more than 75 percent of the primary structure in this area.
Your fellow commissioners can probably answer better than I can, but first, I'll go back to the last question, and when you look at home occupation, it specifically says vehicle repair is prohibited. Yes. Okay. In terms of your question, I remember the first request I got like this shortly after I started here, I went to then-Chairman Esman, and I was very concerned. I said, "This is a big building." And he said, "Oh, no, these are fine. These are big lots, we're good with these, and we've seen these." And so, similarly, I didn't know how much, what the culture was, let's say. And so, again, I'll defer to your fellow commissioners who've sat on the commission for quite a while, but they have seen quite a few and approved them when they're larger lots.
In response to that, in that area, especially South Carson where the larger lots are, there have been quite a few of buildings like this, as well as mother-in-law houses put up, and, you know, smaller structures that are too big or whatever. We have had quite a few of them over the last five or six years I've been here. Any other questions?
Yeah, oh, staff. Staff. I just want to be certain that it's stated in your recommendation, because I don't remember seeing it, that the building would be in accordance with this drawing, and, let's see, what else? And if there's a color that will be required, because we don't want to see it painted chartreuse or pink, you know, or something like that for the neighborhood. Is there anything in here that says that?
No.
Condition number two says all development shall be substantially in accordance with the development plans approved with this application, except as otherwise modified by these conditions of approval. So the proposal is for the building that you've seen the elevations of, with the doors and the openings and the fenestration as detailed, the height, the dimensions as noted, the location as noted on the site plan, and the proposal is that the structure be painted beige.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant please come forward?
Evening, Commissioners. It's been a twenty-some-year absence, the last time I appeared before you. Oh, sure. My name is JP Smith. Do I need to give my address, or?
No.
Okay. Can't remember. It's been 20 years since I've been here. The last project I did was red, 0395, prior to Commissioner Staub coming on the commission, so, been a while.
Okay. First of all, you've read the conditions and all that. Are you in agreement with all the conditions?
They're completely in agreement. The one thing I will know, it will not be painted hazy dimple blue. He's going to go, where I put down beige, because it's a good natural color for that area, he's going to paint it the same color as his home, so that it's good and complementary and matches the community.
That would be more fitting, yeah.
Yeah. And then, as far as, you know, your concern, Chairman, Mr. Chair, is, Mr. Stoops is a professional mechanic, and under his employment contract, he can know, he can't do outside work.
Okay.
So, you know, unless he goes ahead and starts making wreaths for Christmas or something like that, there won't be any home occupation.
Do you have anything to add to Hope's presentation?
No. No. You know, the whole procedure, other than being expensive, has been, you know, really good. I mean, the staff has been outstanding to work with, and, you know, you couldn't ask for anything more.
One question I had, is the plan, will everything be inside, or will there be something?
Well, if you saw what the place looked like a year ago, there was over 25 vehicles that David's dad had acquired over the period of time, and, you know, he's been slowly working with his mom and whittling all of that stuff down. In fact, the question on the fence, as you can tell, it's in a little bit of disrepair, but with this approval, Mr. Stoops and his surrounding neighbors are all going to be chipping in and rebuilding the fence all the way around the property, so it'll also go ahead and be a big improvement to the community.
So the goal is to get the majority, if not all, of the items eventually inside?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Stoops is a typical outdoor Nevada, and he's got toys. He's got RV, he's got boats, he's got quads.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
The only thing is, if you're going to do a fence, it's going to be in accordance with the existing fence that is on the north boundary?
No, it'll probably wind up going to a metal-type fence, so that lasts longer. And it will be done in accordance to city ordinance, so that we meet screening and construction requirements as set forth by the city.
But it'll be solid?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions for the, seeing that? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you want to say anything? Okay, thank you.
Public comment. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment at this time? If you please come forward and state your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Singer Whiteworth, and I live in the neighborhood, about two streets And I'm very concerned about the size of the proposed structure. I don't know, I haven't ever spoken with Mr. Stoops, and I'm really happy that he's been cleaning things up, so, thank you. And I also, based upon his application, would like to commend him for helping his family trying to establish good neighbors, but out of sincerity. I do sincerely respect you for that. Okay. So what I have observed in my immediate neighborhood is that these large, oversized metal structures have, there has been more of a frequency for them to be used for commercial, storage, and/or industrial-type usage. In fact, a block away on Silver Sage, and I do live on Silver Sage, at 670 East, I mean, 670 East Willow Street, that's where I live. So, a bordering home on Silver Sage and Willow Street recently, and they didn't have as large of a metal structure, but they had been using that facility along with their home for commercial plumbing, heating, and other industrial-type uses, and a complaint was made because it was very visible, and they were required to move to an industrial location. There are a couple of other large, oversized metal structures that no one has complained about, because they have kept their yards clean, that are also used for industrial, commercial usage. So what has been happening in the neighborhood, I've been there about 20 years now, is originally it was zoned as a rural, one-acre, kind of a farm-horse type area, and as the neighborhood has changed, we've had some very more high-end quality homes on one-acre properties built, and some semi-custom tract areas, but the older homes have had some decline. There is some blight that has occurred in the neighborhood, if you drive through, you can see. So certainly, Mr. Stoops' building, you know, I agree, he needs some kind of a storage building. I'm just opposed to something that huge, that's, you know, so much bigger than his existing home, and as, in 2015, my neighbor wanted to build a similar structure. He has a larger home, an acre and a third, no garage whatsoever, kept his property immaculate. But in the wisdom, the commission also found that the oversized structure, which in his case was 1,600 square feet, the commission in their wisdom limited the size down to closer to 1,100 square feet, realizing that a huge structure like that is more inclined to be used for a commercial or industrial-type use. And after speaking with several people in the permit office, I found that the city and our inspection process that regulates our zoning, they cannot go into a private structure to see what's going on unless somebody complains. So if an industrial-type automotive repair or other kind of repair with such, you know, grinding, painting, solvents, nobody would ever know unless somebody does complain, and the city cannot go in to inspect it, because unless you're zoned for industrial use and have a business license or such that accommodates that usage in that type of area, the city can monitor those, but not in a residential area. So for some of those reasons, and, you know, many of the people are still on private wells, solvents and things can get into the ground from repair work, and again, it's just the excessively large size. I agree and certainly support that, you know, he can build or some type of structure for storage, but 2,000 square feet is huge. Thank you.
James Park, 4486 Center Drive. I'm the adjacent neighbor to Mr. Stoops, and I would just like to give my approval to this project. He's done a great job of cleaning it up, and actually, if you look at our immediate four blocks, I'll be the only one that doesn't have an outbuilding when he gets done. All four corners have big outbuildings. And I just want to say that, you know, this would be an excellent way to add value to his property, and he's been working really hard, and I have zero complaints about it, and I know that the project is going to end up making the neighborhood look better.
JP Smith again. I just wanted to go ahead, as you folks know, as the commission and Hope can go ahead and verify, because of the fact that we are going through a special use permit, it does allow the city to come back in, and if there is a complaint for them to come check to see if we're in compliance with the conditions that you approved tonight, which one of them is, is that you will not conduct a commercial enterprise out of there. So, you know, there is that, you guys do have that teeth to make sure that nothing happens now, or should Mr. Stoops ever sell the property and another property owner comes in, that they will be restricted as such also.
Are you there, sir? As the applicant, I just had a quick question for you. I noticed in the application that the surrounding, the surrounding neighbors had all signed letters or whatever, stating that they were not against it or whatever.
Yeah, there's actually five missing. But, yeah, we have all but one who's an absentee owner. All of his adjacent, and as well as across the street, neighbors have signed on, just like the ones that took time out tonight to come to the meeting tonight to tell you that, you know, this is, you know, the applicant is a good moral character and that will abide by the provisions.
And they're not opposed to the project?
No. No, in fact, the only complaint we got through this whole entire process is, two of them want to build accessory structures like this, and they were aboard, that they were totally taken back, that they'd have to pay $1,100 to go ahead and do this, and they think that's more criminal than him building the building.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name.
Hi there. My name is John McIntosh. I'm the lady that this nice lady here stopped from building the building that I wanted on my property. And as far as I'm concerned, this gentleman can build anything he wants on his property, which I should have been able to. You knocked me down 10 feet, you know, 10 foot off my building. I mean, you can't even see it from my property. I put up a fence all the way around the place. I keep it clean and nice. And as far as I'm concerned, if you okay his, I would like you to take into consideration letting me put that 10-foot of my building up that I've already purchased. And I'd like that to go on record, but this gentleman, let him build his building. Okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to add one other comment. Susan Whiteworth. And whatever the commission does eventually decide upon as far as the size, I would hopefully like that they would consider adding a condition that all of the unregistered vehicles be stored inside. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Can we go ahead? David Stoops. I live at 4444 Center Drive. My dad passed about two years ago. I acquired the property with my mom. My main goal was to clean up the property, and- My main goal was to clean up the property, and that's where I want to raise my kids. I got three kids. And I work on heavy equipment in the field, so I'm mining. Everything I do is too big to bring home. I work 10 to 14 hours a day, sometimes six days a week. I don't do this stuff at home, except for my personal, you know, my toys, my own, my '59 Ford pickup. The reason my building's that size is because I have, I have a camper, I have a boat, I have six quads, I have a side-by-side, you know, I do a lot of things. And for everything to sit outside, when you add all that up, you know, they're $20,000 apiece or $10,000 apiece. I wanted something to put in inside. So, I went to the consideration of painting my building to match my home. I want to put trees up around it, new fence, and a gravel, everything. I'm not going to have any dirt. So, I want it to look presentable because that's the neighborhood that I want to, you know, I've been, I was born and raised in Carson City, so I just wanted to make that clear, that I have no intentions of ever doing anything. I've, in my whole life, I've never worked and got paid on someone else's vehicle besides my job. So, and the size, and I thought that was pretty standard from what was around the neighborhood, and I tried to keep that in consideration with everybody that I walked around and talked to. I took a whole Saturday and talked to all my neighbors, and everybody was very okay with what I was doing. I didn't go any farther than the surrounding area because I didn't think it needed to go any farther than that, but I just wanted to make that clear, that that's my only use for it and to make the property and everything else look better. Thank you.
I have two concerns. One is the size. In the code, basically, it sets the standard, the bar is no more than 50% of the primary structure. And with this application, we have something that's basically asking for 198% with both accessory structures of the primary structure. And, you know, when the codes were created for the accessory structures, the whole point was that they were accessory, as used as also in size. And it just seems to me that what's happening with a lot of these parcels in this area of Carson City is that you're creating a lot of large accessory structures, the larger of the primary houses, you're creating a lot of metal buildings on residential lots. That can't be handled because there's no design review in place for these accessory structures. Although I would appreciate maybe sometime we have a discussion about that. But I think what you're ending up with is a lot of accessory structures that are much bigger than the homes that are on those lots, that are industrial in appearance, they're industrial in use, and I will have a hard time supporting the special use permit tonight for those reasons. Thanks.
In 2015, when they approved the last structure out here, it appears that the commission added those conditions, number 17, 18, and 19, to that approval, which said, which says basically, you will landscape and make it invisible from the street, you know, you'll do some landscaping or some fencing around it. It says it limited the size, it reduced the size, and I think it was, it is, Mr. McIntosh's building, I think, that they made smaller?
Yeah.
Yeah. The 1,200 square feet?
Yeah, it's like 300 foot.
Okay. And the last, the last one was unregistered and inoperable vehicles would be stored inside once the new property is built. That would be the one condition that I would like to see us consider at least to include. I understand that they're trying to clean up the lot and make places for it. 36.
Okay, mine's 37.
I'm sorry, 37. 17, 18, and 19. Oh, the 2015. And those apparently were added by the commission before they approved it. That would be the way I would interpret that. That doesn't seem like a bad precedent to continue. Now, two of those, or one of them anyway, is already being continued with the fencing. The other is the size that we can debate. And the third one is the removal of the unlicensed and inoperable vehicles, and I would say slash boats. And I understand what they're trying to do, but if we put up a 2,000-square-foot building and we still leave, you know, 15 derelict boats and three old pickup trucks out there, we haven't done anything. And I appreciate what he's trying to do to make it look nicer, but we haven't forced anybody to do anything. We've just taken everything on what's going to happen. Did you find it? Hope, did you find what I was looking for?
I did find what you were looking for. I just want to, there were some words you used at the beginning that I want to address. And the words you used at the beginning was, at the time of the last one, and when you, in 2015. Well, I didn't work here in 2015. I know I've brought more before this commission since then. So, this is interesting, and this is a sample one from 2015. I do want to bring to the commission's attention, and you all know this better than I do, that you have reviewed these type of structures before and without these types of conditions. So, I don't want you to think these conditions are the norm because that hasn't been my observation.
All right, thank you.
And I just want to clarify too, that along those lines, those were particular to those, these particular circumstances in the discussion at the time. And if I, I think I heard you adding them, so I think you need to consider this specific situation because what you've suggested is possibly, let's reduce the size of the building and put all the vehicles in there.
No, I wasn't suggesting that we necessarily change the size. I was suggesting that once this building is complete, we remove the other, the non-registered, non-operating vehicles and boats from the property, which seems like a nice way to clean up the neighborhood.
I had made notes to begin with, which mentioned, will anything still be left outside? Again, like you said, to shrink it down and expect him to get everything in, I don't have a bigger problem with the size, but I would like maybe to set a timeframe, you know, six months to get everything, you know, whatever, to give him a little chance because looking at what's out there, I don't think he can get it all in that building even if he had to. But give him some timeframe and hopefully then any unoperative or whatever would not be allowed outside possibly. Does that make more sense with a time so we don't tie his hands to where he's got to go in tomorrow and start moving things? Get rid of him.
From my perspective of what I was saying is, I would concur with that. I don't think we ought to make it onerous if we're going to ask him to make sure that all those vehicles are gone somewhere by the time the building's done, and everybody's got to have a chance to get rid of it. And you can't, you can't just say, oh, the minute that the building's open, everything needs to be gone. But I think we need to, we need to try and put some sort of a control on it so that we clean it up a little bit.
Possibly bring it back.
Yeah, I agree with what was just said, and I think that this is a big, big improvement over what there currently is. And we have been permitting oversized accessory structures in the past. And I think those two conditions that are on page 37 that Mr. Borders, you know, referred to, I think that they make a lot of sense. But I think that 1,200 square feet ought to be replaced with 2,000 square feet. And I think that we also ought to add the, include boats, and also the cleanup of the vehicles must be done within six months. And whether it's six months from the time they build the structure or six months from approval is a question that I have in my mind yet. I'm not.
I think they need the structure built before they can start moving them anyway. So, I would think it would be six months from when the structure is built.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
And probably before then, he could start deciding what he wanted to get rid of.
And I have, I would be willing to make a motion for approval in accordance with staff's recommendations with the following, with the additional conditions that I just, we just talked about on page 37, 18, and 19, with the size not to exceed 2,000 square feet, and after vehicles slash boats, include boats.
Yeah, boats, campers, whatever, I would think.
Campers and, yeah, that, boats, campers. And that all, all vehicles shall be stored inside of the structure within six months or removed from the property. And the last condition would be that the building shall be, as per the submitted plans and design, and painted in approved color as approved by the planning staff. I didn't see, I couldn't see anywhere where these plans were referred to. Maybe they are and I missed it, but we do have some plans that were given to us this evening that would, I think, make sense. And I would want to be certain that it's not going to be a Quonset hut, you know, or some other kind of structure. It needs to be compatible with the neighborhood. It's a very, a nice neighborhood, and I think we would be remiss if we did anything less than a nice addition at this location.
And Commissioner Salerno, those plans are the plans for the, they were not in the original packet when out, they were in the online packet. So, that's why we, those are the actual plans for what they're doing.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, that may? Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. What I heard Commissioner Salerno say in terms of his motion, it's a motion capturing the conditions of approval in the staff report with an additional three condition. One, reemphasizing that the construction is to be per the plans that were presented to the planning commission with an acceptable color. The color beige was presented, so I think you could incorporate that into your condition. Secondly, that the building size is limited to 2,000 square feet. And third, that the vehicles be stored, that are currently being stored in the backyard be stored within the building.
Yeah, actually, you said vehicles. You were referencing the, these old conditions that were specific to unregistered and inoperable. Remember, people can have vehicles on their property that are outside.
Yeah.
So, is it still, the qualification of unregistered and inoperable, was that intended to be in the motion?
Right, yes.
Okay, and I guess I just have a question, and going back to the findings, should that be the motion? Given the intention of having a solid fence surrounding this yard, I'm curious, in working through the findings, the benefit of the storage of the vehicles in the building as opposed to in the backyard screened by the fence? Because right now, there's not a mandate to have this building. So, it would just be helpful for going forward to understand what the finding is that's being relied on.
It would be reasonable to include that as stated by staff, and that would be my motion.
As long as we're still in discussion. It seems somewhat disingenuous to require that he both screen his yard, which he said he was going to do with the solid fence, and then to require that he move all of the stuff in his yard if you're not going to require that of everyone. So, I, I mean, I think that, I mean, I understand why we did it before, or I think I understand why we did it before, but in this case, it, I mean, I don't know what all of that stuff is in the yard. I can see from the picture that he's not going to be able to get it all in a 50 by 40 building unless he starts stacking stuff up. And I don't think that 18 feet is going to be enough to do that. So, I would, my preference would be that we require a site obscuring fence and landscaping as opposed to saying you have to remove all of the, all of the material in the yard.
But the way it's written, if the boat's operative or the motorhome or whatever, it can still be in the yard. It would be inoperative, unlicensed.
Well, you can, you can have a unlicensed, an unregistered boat, anybody can have one in their yard. It's not, it's not, there's not a law that says you can't keep one. I just, I just think that the screening is more of an issue than, you know, what's in the yard.
I confer with you. I agree.
So, you're saying we should drop 19?
Right, I would drop 19 and add 17.
And add 17, which is the making sure fencing or, can you read that? I don't have it right here.
Could we, rather than relying on the 2015 conditions, which really have nothing to do with this, can we just articulate what the objectives are? And I believe what I heard Commissioner Salerno say is three things, which now number three's been sort of changed to what Commissioner S. Wine said. And it was a motion to approve the special use permit based on the ability to make the findings subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report with the following additional three conditions. One, the plans shall be per, the construction shall be per the plans presented to the planning commission utilizing the color beige. The building shall be no more than 2,000 square feet, and the yard shall be screened with site obscuring fencing.
Let us know if you're willing to accept that.
I mean, we completely understand what you're, where your guys are coming from. The only thing is that I put the color beige in the application just because I knew that would be a good color, but Mr. Stoops actually is going to paint it the same color as his house so that it blends in better. So, if you would just.
And that's kind of a gray tone, I believe, or?
Yeah, if you just put it that the building be a complementary color to the existing structure.
And acceptable to the planning department.
Yeah, acceptable to the planning commission.
That's fine, sir.
You know, I don't want him to have to paint it beige just because I.
Staff, would that be okay to be acceptable to the building, planning department?
Right, we can just add the condition that the construction shall be per the plans presented to the planning commission, and the color shall be beige or a color complementary to the existing home.
That's fine. That's fine. And just so you know, if those of you that have grown up here or have hobbies and stuff, Mr. Stoops' father gave him a lot of antique trucks and things, and so they're in the process of restoration. And so, some of them are going to be registered, some of them aren't going to be registered. And as long as we've had it screened so you can't see it anywhere, we'd like, you know, the ability to move things in and out of the shop so as he's working on them and such.
And I think we accomplish that by just going with the fencing instead of that other condition, so.
But no, it's all common sense and all more than fair. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
For the bend of the record, I'm happy to state the motion as staff understands it to be. The motion is a motion to approve the special use permit based on the ability to make the seven required findings a fact and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report with the following additional three conditions of approval. One, construction shall be per the plans presented to the planning commission utilizing the color beige or a color compatible with the home. Two, the building shall not exceed 2,000 square feet. And three, the yard area shall be screened with site obscuring fencing.
Now, do we also need to read the recommended motion with those additions so you have the SUP number, et cetera, and all that in there? No? We don't have to?
No, we, you know, we don't have to specify the APN and all that. I just want to make sure for the record, we're clear that that's the motion as amended from Commissioner Salerno, as read by Hope Sullivan.
And I will second that.
Commissioner Borders' second said. All in favor, seconded by by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Stolel. Give my second to clear out. Give them a second to clear out. Give them just, just a moment for everyone to, even to leave. Okay, E2, ZCA-17-183 for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding an ordinance amending Title 18 zoning chapter 18.04, Use District Section 18.04.130 to add tattoo parlors to permit use in a retail commercial zoning district. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting to amend the text of the, of Title 18 to allow a tattoo parlor as a permitted use in the retail commercial zoning district. If this amendment were approved, it would make a tattoo parlor also approved in the general commercial and limited industrial zoning districts. Currently, it's a conditional use in the limited industrial zoning district. I will note that body piercing is an allowed use in the retail commercial zoning district. I suspect that our ordinance is from a time when tattooing was not as mainstream as it is now and so it was placed in the industrial area, so that would be out of the way, where everybody wouldn't see it. I think it's evolved and I think the applicant, Jason Mindel, did a good job kind of outlining the evolution of tattooing. The planning commission does, you do not have the authority to amend the code. You make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. In doing so, you need to review three findings and make them in the affirmative. The first is master plan consistency. The second is land use compatibility with adjacent uses and no detrimental impact to properties in the vicinity. And third, that will not negatively impact public services or health, welfare, and safety. The staff was able to make these three findings in the affirmative as outlined in the staff report. I will note that we did reach out to the sheriff's office and spoke with both the undersheriff and the assistant sheriff and verified that the sheriff's office has no concerns whatsoever with this proposed amendment. I will also note that the ordinance, draft ordinance that's in your packet has been reviewed by the district attorney's office. He does agree with the substance of the, or he's, he's comfortable with the substance of the ordinance. He may make some stylistic modifications, but those will be stylistic and not substantive. Again, the staff has been able to make the findings in the affirmative and we are recommending approval. Jason Mindel, the applicant, is present and he is happy to speak with the commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Stowe.
Just, just a question, any idea how many tattoo establishments there are in the city?
I have no idea, but Jason may know since he's in the business.
As far as I know, there's three, but not in my immediate area.
Jason, wait, wait. Wait till you're at the microphone.
There's a lot of them.
Any more questions for staff? Would the applicant please come forward?
Jason Mindel.
Is there anything you would like to add or presentation or whatever?
I pretty much laid it all out, just that the industry in itself has evolved so far since it first came together. In the early days, everyone was making their own needles and their own machines and there was no regulation or sterilization or anything like that. And nowadays, everything's pretty much prefabricated and a completely different world.
Do you want to answer the question about how many tattoo parlors in Carson?
As far as I know, there's three, but none in my immediate area due to the zoning issues.
I think there's a, as far as places are doing tattoo, and I think there's considerably more than three, though. I know of two in my neighborhood, so anyway, go ahead. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Bring it back for discussion? Oh, a public comment. Okay, seeing none, bring it back for discussion or a possible motion or whatever. Ms. Restlin?
This is just an observation. Looking at all the permitted uses, I don't see professional uses in there, lawyers and doctors who I know are in the commercial, commercial district. And, I mean, this just...
Yes?
I mean, this, this kind of service just seems to be, you know, and it's sort of in, I mean, it's, it's, it's different, but it's within, you know, same sort of type of, of occupation. So I would, I don't have a problem with, with, with this application.
Well, and I, I know also that often the body piercing was done at, at other places, you know, even at hairdressers, whatever, but I'm, it's also a major part often of the tattoo area as well, so it's kind of unusual. They can do body piercing in that area, but they can't do tattooing, so.
Commissioner?
Yes?
That's right. I have found that the, the tattoo trade, the art of tattooing, has gone through a tremendous change and I'm very appreciative of the safety that they take now, the health concerns and the regulations that they've got to ensure that there's no bloodborne pathogens, that they are very, very careful about that and very concerned about their customers' health and safety. So I, I have absolutely no problem with this at all.
Thank you. So bring it back for either a motion or more discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion.
Ms. Restlin?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZCA-17-183 and ordinance amending Title 18 zoning chapter 18.04, Use Districts, Section 18.04.130 to add tattoo parlor to permitted uses in the retail commercial, general commercial, and limited industrial zoning districts and providing other matters properly relating there to.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Engle's seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, 6-0. Thank you. So...
Do you need a motion to continue that?
Yes, I'm, uh, I'll just read it first. E3, TSM-17-184, we need a motion for continuance to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to return tentative subdivision map of Blackstone Development to create 209 lot subdivision on approximately 58.5 acres within Alapa Ranch North Pacific Plan on property approved, single-family 6,000 SF6 zoning located at 2200 East Fifth Street, APN 010-041-71, once they have made...
To date uncertain.
Go ahead.
To date uncertain.
Uh, once they have made their...
Oh, I thought you made a motion, sorry.
No, I'm just reading it at this point.
Sorry, I thought it was a motion. Okay, at the request of the applicant, staff is recommending continuation of this item. The appropriate motion would be continuation to a date uncertain.
I would make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Restlin, a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Stowe, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Are we going to do E4? Yes.
Oh, okay. E4, MPA-17-191 for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the annual master plan report. Commissioner Lee?
Thank you for the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This is, the November meeting of the Planning Commission is when we annually bring the master plan report to you to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. We do this annually. It's required by the, by state law, by NRS to promote master plan, so that's the reason we bring it forward. I'm not going to bury the lead on this, as I talked about, and you'll see in the recommendation, the recommendation's going to be to continue this, to continue this and we'll bring it back at a, at a future meeting so that I can, we can work with, working with the Public Works, GAS Department right now to, to develop a land use, to update our land use capacity analysis based on the current master plan. And I think, I think that's a, that's a really key portion for this board to, this commission to have to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. It's, it's being done per the direction of the Board of Supervisors. I'm not going to bring it to them with, without this and so I'd like to have that in hand to present, to present to you and to answer questions on that. So it'll likely be January. We have a, it's a short turnaround now to the December meeting, so it'll probably be January, January when I'll, when I'll bring this all back. That being said, the report's in your packet. I would like to go from, through some things. I'll go through some things now that I won't have to repeat next time. Happy to take questions if there's additional information that you'd like to see in the next couple of months, you know, you can, you can give me that. So with that, I'll, let me go through a short presentation for you before I take questions. Couple of things I noted from the recommendations that went to this planning commission last year, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. We talked about last year having more, going through the master plan incrementally, having training on it. We really didn't do that at all in the last year. We've had a lot of development. We, it was kind of at the time, so we, this is something we will do as we have time and we have smaller agendas and things have happened over the last year and we've had pretty busy years, so we, so we haven't got to that. I think with this next review and doing the capacity analysis, that's a real big piece of kind of seeing, reevaluating where we are overall with our current master plan. So we'll, we'll continue to leave this on the radar screen and, and work on that. Another thing that you forwarded in recommendation was to provide an update to the school district on, regarding school growth. Since last year, we've had, I want to say quarterly, but I know regular meetings, joint meetings between the Board of Supervisors and school board and we've actually, I've actually been part of growth projection presentations with them at a couple of meetings in the, in the last year. So we have, we have done that. We'll continue to work with them through their processes. And then another thing that was identified that we, that was, I think, requested by the, by the Planning Commission was a presentation on economic development. I sort, say we sort, I think that's incomplete. We really haven't per se brought, I'm not sure what that would look like, who that's, who that's by. We can have some discussion on that. We could continue to think about that. Certainly, we have talked about some development data, which is part of an economic development presentation, but certainly not the whole thing. So that's something, again, I think, coming back next month, we'll think about that a little, a little bit more in detail as to what that might look like, coming back to information from the planning, to the Planning Commission. I'm going to go through these real quick. These are, these are some slides and information that's in your presentation. I'll leave it up there for a little bit for anybody watching. The first part here is about our residential, the number of units that have been built since, this chart goes back to 1996. Just note, we, we do this, I, I give, you basically get this information twice a year. You get it with growth management in the middle of the year in May. You get it with master plan at the end of the year in November. Right now, I would say just on a percentage, we're not even on, we're not on track to meet the total units that we had in 2016, but that could, there also might be some projects coming in and we're, we're going to still add some units before the end of the year, so that's going to get much closer to that. And there's obviously still a lot of units lined up in the queue, in the queue for next year. And there's other factors that are going to determine how fast, there are economic factors that will determine, help determine how fast building permits actually come in for residential growth. Just again, with the, the upper chart there's the overall valuation of different types of building permits that have come in. These graphs just show where the recession is and where we've come out of the recession in terms of overall volume and the level of development and going on. The, the lower one there is just a number of planning applications that we're, that we're seeing. So again, in recent years, they continue to, continue to creep up with a little bit more work every year in terms of planning applications. So a little bit on this, too. I looked up in this next chart here is kind of, here's, here's nationwide, the population change between 2000 and 2010 represented graphically. So this just shows that, you can see here the parts of the country that are growing are in the greenest colors, the darker green are growing faster. Those that are declining in population are reddish in color, the darker red are declining faster. We're, we're in, you see some red in rural Nevada, some of the rural Nevada areas, but generally, we're in an area that's, that's generally growing. That's the west and we're a city, so we're growing. I looked it up, the actual, our, our, our actual growth numbers, so these percentages, the lightest green is from zero to 9.6% growth over a, over a 10-year period and we were at about five year, we're about at 5% between that, between 2000 and 2010. Going back to our, if you think back to the, when building permits were, that makes sense. We went through, recession started, building permits stopped, jobs went away, so we, our growth wasn't, was only 5% then. I looked back between, between 1990 and 2000 was a 30% growth between that time, so it was a little bit more. And so what, I don't know what the future holds then. I think, you know, going back to the 1990s, what, what led to a lot of the faster pace was more greenfield development. We had larger tracts of land, Silver Oak, and larger pieces that were open. We may be seeing that same type of thing coming up with, with Lampa Ranch opening up and Schultz Ranch, but even though Schultz Ranch has been there for a couple of years and while that's increased the pace, it really hasn't jumped off the page yet in terms of the overall number of units in the city. So you can take that for what it's worth, but I just thought that was a little bit interesting, showing where, where growth is occurring in the nation and where, where it's declining. So also, I have three areas for possible master plan amendments in consideration that I think may come as recommendations with the next thing, too, but I'll just touch on them real quick. This area here, this Dean Court, North Gate and Narrow Head, was an area where you had a variance before you very recently and somebody brought this up, so why is it, why is it zoned, single-family, one acres where this, when they're third acre lots or so, quarter acre lots, but they have one acre setbacks? So basically, all of the, not sure the origins of this, they're all non-conforming setbacks now, probably can't build anything within the setbacks now, so this would be an area that would, should probably be corrected, so that might be an easier one to make the appropriate designation and rezoning. So have any questions on that? Couple other areas have actually come up recently, these are also in your staff report, where, where the question of the zoning has, has come up and with the permitted uses. The first one is, again, would, would just be a master plan consist, well, this would, not again, this would be a master plan consistency zoning, is not changing the master plan. On the left, this is the, we have, we have the area where Walmart is here, here's College Parkway and the freeway of Walmart here, Home Depot here. This whole shopping center's designated commercial on the master plan, that makes sense, it's commercial uses. There's a vestige of industrial zoning over most of that property, though, going back to before the freeway was even planned and, and the master plan, the intent was to rezone it, it just hasn't been done yet. So this might be a time to, to come back and look at, look at that. And then thirdly, the last one is not a, bring the zoning into consistent with the, with the master plan, but I think this, this may warrant a look at the last, at the master plan. And I don't know how familiar, familiar you are with this area. This, this area I have highlighted there with the circle is to the west of Cochise, between Cochise and Voltaire, largely vacant, there's some houses there now. The properties are largely for sale right now, so we've had a lot of interest in it. It's designated commercial. If you know, the property's got a pretty good slope on it, it butts up to the one acre residential going up the hill there. We've had a lot of interest for residential, frankly, on this. I don't, I don't know the right answer to what the master plan designation should be here, but I think it's something worth, worth talking about and considering. And furthermore, I think it's worth something considering, not only with the land use capacity analysis, I think that's a real important element to say, with, with the current residential land use we have, how much residential growth does that get us? That would help inform kind of what, this decision. But also, there's a housing study that the, the Nevada Rural Housing Authority is going to present to the Board of Supervisors. that the, the Nevada Rural Housing Authority is going to present to the Board of Supervisors at their meeting next week, December 7th. One way or another, I'll get that information to you, but, but that's just, that's just coming out, so part of what they're pushing for is to provide for more housing in the range that's affordable to the workforce and others as prices go up. So that, that might be something that, another tool to use and information to have to decide what type of land uses we need for the future. So something else to get on our radar screen in the next year. So again, the conclusion's the main thing there, just being, I, I think we do want to update the land use capacity analysis and bring that back. And with that, pretty much being the recommendation tonight is for you to continue the master plan, report recommendations, and we'll, we'll bring it back to you when that's complete and have more information. So with, that's the end of my presentation, but I'd be happy to take any questions or comments on the information that you have.
Out of curiosity, the school board kind of presented to us during one of the Lampa things, you know, the situation, they went through the different areas and all that, so we did see a presentation on that. The, with the Lampa project, and I don't know if that would be a master plan thing or whatever, but do you see where there's so much per resident or square foot of industrial for both fire and schools? Has that been done before, or is this the first time with the Lampa? Is that something we might consider in the future, or the master plan might consider? As far as where they're getting $1,000?
Impact fees?
Impact fees?
Um, impact fees are something that have been discussed at the city management level. Put it that way. I think it's a topic that's going to come up with the Board of Supervisors in the next year. And actually, that's another thing, the Board of Supervisors is having a goal-setting retreat tentatively scheduled in January, I think it is, January or February, so those, that's when, I think that's going to be part of the discussion then.
I mean, especially on the larger projects, I mean, that's a real advantage to the city as far as they get a new firehouse and a school out of it just because of the impact fee.
If an impact fee is going to be considered, I, my personal opinion is, I've had many discussions with all sorts of folks about this, something a little more substantive than $1,000 per building lot would be more beneficial than $1,000 that doesn't cover much of anything, infrastructure-wise or anything.
And I think it would be on the bigger projects, too. I mean, you don't want to start doing that for two houses or whatever.
Correct. And I think it would add to this discussion about impact fees, that actually, this, this Planning Commission would be, I forget the term in NRS, but you would basically be the impact fee advisory board. So that's actually the first step in the process, and, and I think, I think you are going to see that early in the next few months, is getting direction from the board to at least create that in order to have the discussion and do the, the analysis that are required to, that would be required to implement any impact fees.
And I think a lot of times, the, the words get tossed around, but, I mean, really, the fees from Lampa Ranch are not real impact fees. They're, they're negotiated through the development agreement, correct? So, so Carson City really does not have, per se, impact fees at the current time for anything, correct?
The residential construction tax for parks may be considered an impact fee, I don't, it's called something different, but, yeah. That's the only, that's the only, in a, water connection fees, sewer connection fees, there, there, those are fees, but I think you're right, the only, the only impact to other services is parks, there's no other impact fee.
And if I'm not mistaken, state law sets certain parameters on what, what you can do with, with impact fees and how much you can charge and what percentage, how you establish those. And it's, I think $1,000 is probably pretty close to what the limit is, but I'm not positive at this point, they may have changed them. But they are, they are limited by state law. I have a, I was, when you sent out the email, Hope, about, you know, where to find the, the additional material for tonight, I, I ran into the, the listing of, of projects under review, and I noticed a lot of them where, where the building permits and the construction plans were under review. Are those included in the, in your charts here? Like the apartments up on, off of Clearview and...
Do they, does it... I think it's not until it's issued. No, that, no. It's not until they're issued.
Not until they're issued. Okay, because there are a lot of them that are under review.
Yeah. And we know, and I mean, we know a little bit more detail as to when, by talking to them, as to, as to when they may actually pick them up or not.
Uh-huh.
But, so which would help, I mean, which we can factor into a capacity analysis really easy, knowing that those things are coming forward.
Right, and especially that, down in the south end of town there, where you've got the Marriott project, you've got those, those condominiums up, or the apartments behind the Galaxy. It's, it's going to make a, a major change in that, that neighborhood, so I think that it's really good that we look at this other section here that is adjacent to that.
Lee, there's another comment that you had in here on page three. I know we're not going to analyze it, but I just, it just struck me as, in the last of the first paragraph, you talked about rental of guest buildings to solve affordable housing issues. What's the, what's the input, where did that come from?
That came from, actually came from Commissioner.
Ah, I know, but I...
It came up at this commission, so I think that's something...
Oh, the commission that a commissioner did.
A commissioner, yeah.
But it's in your master plan.
It is, it is a, it is a policy in the master plan that was, yeah, so that's a, that'll be, that's up for discussion when you make your recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think, again, that's something that's, that discussion's better suited after seeing the housing report, whether it's supported by or not, I don't know at this point, but good information to have for that.
And I'm very glad to see it as recommended action for 2018, since it is in the master plan. And, and the only question is, you know, in terms of, of whether there would be some interest from the Board of Supervisors to look at doing an update of the master plan, and, and whether it makes sense, you know, whether that's ever going to happen in the near future. But, but maybe, one option would be to say, well, maybe there's really no need to do a full update of the master plan, but would there be interest in maybe looking at an update of the housing element of the master plan, since that, you know, was adopted at the same time? Just, just to throw that out there, but glad to see that it's recommended to look at moving forward on that action in terms of accessory dwelling units. It'd be great to look at that and toss that about and move forward on that in some fashion.
Yeah, in terms of what she's, the second bullet up there, too, because it has come up about, it has continued to come up now and risen more to the board level of, should we update the master plan? Again, I think we need more information to definitively say that, we, we need to do that. And then, if we do, they're going to need to allocate some money to do that, so, and that's part of that second bullet up there, is maybe we continue to take little pieces of it, as Candace said, and, and continue on with the majority, but if we really want to do a community-wide, community input type of affair, it's going to, it's going to take some outside help to do that.
Lee, where, where we have approved guest buildings or mother-in-law quarters or whatever, if that were changed, would they be able to then go to rental, or would they have to come back before us again? Or, because we put that limit on some of them, correct, that they couldn't be here?
Right, right. So we'd have to address that with, with that discussion.
We need to make...
Taking action on this?
I would move that we continue this item to, to further, for, a date uncertain.
We have a motion to continue with date uncertain.
I'll second.
Sorry, staff reports, non-accentual.
I'm going to look up some things here. One of the things we have, one of the things we did have, the, speaking of, I mentioned Schultz Ranch earlier, the one down in South Carson City, Topsie Lane, and then go, go east. So they, Phase Three was approved, so that Phase, Phases One and Two was a total of 210 or so units, of which they're a little more, about halfway, maybe a little more than halfway through getting permits for those, but they've started improvements and now recorded the map for Phase Three. Phase Three is going to include the park construction down there. And then the other thing that was at the Board of Supervisors was the Lampa Ranch Agreement was approved, the development agreement. That just formal, that just really formalizes all the conditions of approval that were put in place through the process. And next month, what do we, what do we have next month? We have a...
Coming here? We have that variance one?
Have a variance. It should be another, it should be a pretty light agenda. I know that the, the, the chair's going to be out of town at the start of December, or at, sorry, December during that meeting, and, but it's going to be a light agenda, but we'll have, now we have a couple items continued to January, so we'll see some more then.
Text amendment.
Yeah.
I was going to be here for that meeting, but I've found we're going to have Christmas with family. I filed out my seven-year-old granddaughter's first dance recital as the 19th, and if I'm not there, I think there might be some problems. We're going to be in St. George that day. I was going to wait to leave till after, but I got corrected by my wife, so we'll be going a day early. But I'm sure Commissioner Borris can handle it. Commissioner reporting. For adjournment.
Salute.
Salute. All in favor?
Aye.
For adjournment.
Oh, have a comment?
Oh.
There's no one here.